It is also not feasible for any member of the Planning Commission to be present at the regular location. So we will all be attending via telephone or other electronic means. We will begin this meeting today by taking a roll call. Sonya, can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Commissioner DeJoy?
Here.
Commissioner Grill?
Here.
Commissioner Huang?
Here.
Commissioner Hood?
Here.
Commissioner McMurtry?
Here.
Commissioner Perryman?
Here.
Commissioner Presley? Commissioner Riley?
Here.
Commissioner Rizberg?
Here.
Commissioner Said?
Here.
Commissioner Taggaf?
Here.
Commissioner Underwood?
Here.
Commissioner Yang? Commissioner Yang? And of course, the Chair?
Here.
And that's it.
All right. So the first item on the agenda for today will be the swearing in of new Commissioners. Commissioner Richard Holst, Libby Cantor, Deborah Mitchell, Stephen Moore, and Sean Thomas. I had asked, they will be replacing some Commissioners that we had an opportunity to work with, and that is Commissioner Kathy Mucho Power, Commissioner Bill Lindicky, and Commissioner Oliver. I had asked to see if they could attend to just so that we can give them a thanks. And then see if they had any last parting words for us, or words of encouragement. Commissioner Lindicky was unable to make it, either was Commissioner Mucho Power. She said she might try to make it, but it doesn't look like she's here. And I don't believe Commissioner Oliver is present either. But if we could go on and do the swearing in, I would ask the Commissioners that are being sworn in if you could turn on your camera. At this time.
Would you like me to go ahead? This is Sheri Moore, the City Clerk.
Yes, please.
Okay, if I could have you all that are being sworn in, please raise your right hands, unmute if you're not already. But raise your right hands and repeat after me. I state your name.
I.
Do soundly swear.
Soundly swear.
To support the constitutions.
To support the constitutions.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Minnesota.
And of the State of Minnesota.
And to discharge faithfully.
And to discharge faithfully.
The duties devolving upon me.
The duties devolving upon me.
As a member of the Planning Commission.
As a member of the Planning Commission.
Of the City of St. Paul.
Of the City of St. Paul.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So congratulations to the five new Commissioners. I'll call on you one at a time. And if you could just introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about what you do for a living, and what caused you to join the Commission before moving forward, just so that we can. It's so hard with the pandemic, you know, so that we can recognize who you are. So I'll start with Commissioner Holst.
Hello, my name is Richard Holst. I live in the North End neighborhood of St. Paul. I joined the Commission because I really care about the City of St. Paul, and care about its future. And I'd like to be part of the direction in some meaningful way. I've recently been involved in my community council as Chair. I sit on a school board for a local charter school. And most recently was on Neighborhood Star for about the last four or five years or so. Professionally, I work for a software company, and then as a side gig, I do some rental property, so.
Welcome, Commissioner Holst.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cantor?
Good morning. My name is Libby Cantner. I live in the Summit University neighborhood of St. Paul. I've lived in various places in Ward One my whole life. But here, in my current house for the last eight years, I joined the Planning Commission because, similar to Rich, I care greatly about the City of St. Paul. And I've dedicated my life to working in different capacities in the city. I worked for two different city council members, and then for the civilian review board for the police department. So reviewing complaints against the police. And just really excited to be here and get started.
Thank you, and welcome, Commissioner Cantor. Commissioner Deborah Mitchell?
Hello. Hi, I am Dr. Deborah Mitchell, and I am the Executive Director for Roar St. Anthony Neighborhood Development Corporation. I've been there now for about nine months, and so, but I've been, I live on the east side of St. Paul. But I have been part of the community and working very diligently on affordable housing and for low-income people. So I am very excited to be here, and I truly, truly want to make a difference in our community for people to live and work.
Thank you, and welcome, Commissioner Mitchell. Commissioner Stephen Moore?
Morning, everyone. My name is Stephen Moore, and I am the founder of a startup called Culture Booster. We're an HR tech company. And I'm a resident of Dayton's Bluff. Typically, you will find me on the sidelines. But George Floyd's tragic murder has pushed me to just serve the community and be a part of the conversation. And so I'm really grateful to be here, really grateful to get to know you all. And I'm looking forward to serving our beautiful city. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome, Commissioner Moore. And then finally, but not least, Commissioner Sean Thomas. Or just Shawnee.
Hi, thank you. Good morning. It's Cian, Cian Thomas. Yeah, that's okay. I've been called worse. I am a resident of the east side of St. Paul, Payne-Falen neighborhood. I actually went to Falen Lake Elementary School. I went to Cleveland Middle School, and graduated from Johnson High School. So I am deeply embedded in this east side community. I own a small boutique real estate brokerage, ABC Realty. And I work with Dayton's Bluff Neighborhood Housing Services, and Habitat, and Project for Pride and Living. And so I kind of work in that niche of nonprofit housing development, affordable housing. I also am very active in my community and with the Home Ownership Center on taking on the Minnesota's homeownership gap, and seeking ways to close that homeownership gap. So I have a lot of experience in real estate and some development. And the Planning Commission role, I felt, would give me a really good perspective to continue to develop my understanding and knowledge of that intersection of real estate development and equity. So I'm happy to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome, Commissioner Thomas. So, and welcome to all the Commissioners. We have quite a large agenda today, only because towards the end, I actually missed it. But I was reminded today that we do have, we will be receiving a presentation on the scope and authority of the Commission for the new Commissioners. I'll just give you a brief synopsis of where we're at with that. So, well, I'll wait till we get to that point to sort of describe what the presentation will be about, and the scope of what we would be doing today with that. But then I'll move on to Chair announcements. Luis?
Good morning, Commissioner. I actually don't have any announcements, but I will, I look forward to the presentation you alluded to, Chair, later in the meeting. Unless you have thoughts or questions for me. And if not, thank you.
All right. So the next item on the agenda is the Zoning Committee. Before I pass it over to Commissioner Baker, I do know that all the new Commissioners received sort of all the information with regards to the items that we will be voting on today. If you feel comfortable voting on them, you can go ahead and have reviewed all the materials. I believe you're allowed to vote on those items. If you don't feel comfortable, that's okay. Or haven't had an opportunity to review the materials that Luis sent out, if you just ask to abstain either from any particular item or from all items when you're called upon, that would be fine as well. Commissioner Baker?
Thanks, Chair. Appreciate it. And I just want to say also, welcome to all of my new fellow Commissioners. Great to have you on board. Looking forward to working with you. I actually, that you also bear with me, specifically on the first zoning case, it is a little complex, but we'll get through it. I first want to start off by saying the March 23 site plan review meeting has been canceled. And then the upcoming zoning committee meeting has the following items. 1219 St. Clair Avenue rezoning from B1 local business to T3 traditional neighborhood. 1001 Rainey Avenue, which is a rezoning from RT1 two-family residential to RM1 low-density multi, or multiple-family residential. The next is 554 Broadway Street rezoning from I1 Light Industrial to B5 Central Business Services District. And then lastly, 603 Edmund Avenue reestablishment of a non-conforming use as a duplex. So to provide the report out for the March 11 zoning committee, again, I'd like to highlight that it's somewhat complex. There, the case was laid over multiple times. I know that, I think Mr. Richardson is with us here in this meeting, and he will be able to answer any questions. And I would also like to ask any of my zoning committee colleagues to add anything after my report, if you feel like a perspective was missing. So James Lexington Apartments, which was old business for the zoning committee during our last meeting, this is a conditional use permit for a 65 feet 8 inches building height and variances for front, rear, and side yard setback for 1074 to 1096 James Avenue between Lexington Parkway and Interstate 35E. So in June 2020, the applicant applied to rezone the six parcels from R4 to RM2. And on July 24, 2020, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the rezoning, and requested that the site plan review for development on this property come to the Planning Commission for a public hearing and approval. So then fast forward to February 11, 2021, the zoning committee held a public hearing on this case and decided to lay it over twice until the March 11 meeting to allow the applicant and staff to work together to deal with outstanding issues that came up during the zoning committee meeting. There was, and I just also want to highlight that there was, we found out from the applicant and also from letters, there was much community engagement done on this project from the applicant. But there, at the time of the initial zoning committee meeting, there wasn't as much work done behind the scenes between the applicant and the city for the city to really understand the project and any changes. So in the initial staff report, there were multiple findings that were not met. However, after talking with the applicant, changes included changing the front of the building to Lexington and shifting the building to the east property line to add the front yard setback long, area along Lexington Parkway. So ultimately, the final staff report found that three of the conditions were still not met. And I want to list them out. The first one was 2A, which states the extent, location, and intensity of the use will be in substantial compliance with the St. Paul Comprehensive Plan and any applicable sub-area plans which were approved by the city council. The second one was 2C. The use will not be in detriment, the use will not be detrimental to the existing character of the development in the immediate neighborhood or endanger the public health, safety, and general welfare. And then number three, with the third one, which would be 3D, of the plight of the landowner is due to circumstances unique to the property not created by the landowner. So based on findings 2A, 2C, and 3D, staff recommended denial of the conditional use permit for the building height and variances for the front yard setback, but recommended approval of variances for the rear yard setback and side yard setbacks. And I would also like to highlight that staff did detail reasoning, provide detailed reasoning for their denial in the final version of their staff report and recommendation. So the district council, District Council 14, recommended approval of this project. No one spoke in favor or in opposition of the application during our last public hearing. There were eight letters of support and two letters in opposition of the project. There was much discussion between zoning committee members on this case, and ultimately, there was a desire by the majority of the members to support the project. Some of the committee discussion was concerning the overall building height, staff's view of the project and compliance with the Comprehensive Plan, and more understanding of the setbacks. The zoning committee voted 5-1 to approve the project and provided language in the motion to support findings to be met for 2A, 2C, and 3D. The motion to approve the project had three conditions. First, that final plans be approved by the planning commissioner or zoning administrator. Two units required to be affordable shall be occupied by qualifying low-income residents prior to receiving a COP, excuse me, a certificate of occupancy for the new building or building expansion. And then three, the applicant shall apply to the owner of the north-south portion of the alley right of way, immediate to the east parcel to request a vacation of at least seven feet adjacent to the parcel to allow the building footprint to shift far enough to the east to meet the front setback requirements. However, if this does not happen, this was not contingent on overall approval of the project. So with that, Chair, there was a motion and approval by the zoning committee to approve this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Baker. So the motion coming out of committee after several weeks of discussion was for approval with the three conditions, correct?
That is correct.
Is there any discussion on the motion or questions? All right, Cian, Sonya, can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner DeJoy?
Aye.
Commissioner Grill?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner McMurtry?
Yes.
Commissioner Said?
Yes.
Commissioner Perryman?
Oh.
Commissioner Rizberg? I can't hear you, Commissioner Rizberg.
Yes, I couldn't, I couldn't hear my name. There's some background noise.
Oh, somebody, I'll mute him. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Underwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Taggaf?
No.
Commissioner Huang?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantener?
Yes.
Commissioner Holst?
One, oh. Before we finish the roll call, Luis, we're, I'm looking at the email, were the materials sent to the new Commissioners?
Yes.
Yeah, Chair, they were.
Okay, sorry, Sonya, go ahead.
Commissioner Holst?
Yes.
Commissioner Mill?
Abstain.
Thank you. Commissioner Moore?
Abstain.
Commissioner Thomas?
Abstain.
Okay, I need to go back. I'm sorry. Commissioner Rizberg, did you say yes?
Yes, I did.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear. 13-3, 13-2, sorry. Passes.
How many abstentions?
Three.
Three. So the motion is approved for the conditional use permit, as well as the variances at 1074 James Avenue between Lexington Parkway and I-35E with the three conditions. Commissioner Baker?
Thanks, Chair, and I just wanted to thank staff, specifically Mr. Richardson, on this case and working with the applicant and going back and forth, all of department staff. Again, this was a somewhat of a complex case, and it took multiple weeks. But I appreciate staff working with the zoning committee to get more information and to work with the applicant. Moving on to new business, North End Community Center, 1025 Rice Street is conditional use permit for multi-use community recreation center with modification of conditions to permit parking in the minimum front yard and principal access to be from Lawson Street. Variance for parking front setback. The site is owned by the City of St. Paul and used for recreational ball fields managed by the Parks and Recreation Department. The ball fields have existed since 1945 and have been rezoned RT1 since 1975. The Parks and Recreation Department expects the construction could take 18 months, but will depend on construction financing. Staff found that conditions 2A was not met, which states the proposed site for any of the uses permitted herein shall have at least one property line of budding a major thoroughfare. And the site shall be so planned as to provide principal access directly to said major thoroughfare. However, there was a request modification of this condition because of the undue burden on the city if the project was to meet the required front setback as it would impact size of the multipurpose field and limit future programming on the site. So because of that, staff recommended approval of the application with a condition that the final plans be approved by the zoning administrator. District 6 sent a letter recommending approval for the project. There were no letters in support or opposition of the application, and no one spoke in favor or against the application during the public hearing. The zoning committee voted 7-0 to approve the application.
Thanks. So the motion coming out of committee is to approve the conditional use permit for multi-use community recreation center. Is there any discussion on the motion? Cian, Sonya, can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Rizberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Perryman?
Yes.
Commissioner Grill?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner DeJoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Taggaf?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Said?
Yes.
Commissioner McMurtry?
Yes.
Commissioner Underwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Huang?
Huang. Yes.
Commissioner Thomas? Are you abstaining?
Abstain.
Commissioner Moore?
Abstain.
Commissioner Cantener?
Yes.
Commissioner Holst?
Abstain.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
14, yes. Zero, no, and three abstentions.
So the motion for a conditional use permit at 1025 Rice Street is approved. Commissioner Baker?
Thanks, Chair. The next item is the Lexington Landing Phase 2. So this is at 915 Albion Avenue. It's a conditional use permit for a 50-feet building height. This is the site of the former Riverview School that was demolished in 19, excuse me, 2017. The property was rezoned from R4 to R2 in 2018. This is the second phase of a senior housing development. The applicant owns the property and proposes a market-rate senior rental living community with 92 units, units of one and bedroom units along with one guest unit. Staff found that all conditions were met for this application. The district council letter, sent a letter in support of the project. No one spoke in favor or against the application during the public hearing, and there were no letters in support or opposition for this application. The zoning committee voted 7-0 to approve the application with one condition, that final plans are approved by the zoning administrator.
Great. So the motion coming out of committee is to approve the conditional use permit for a 15-foot building height at 915 Albion Avenue? Is there any discussion on the motion coming out of committee? Cian, Sonya, can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner DeJoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Grill?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Huang?
Yes.
Commissioner McMurtry?
Yes.
Commissioner Perryman?
Yes.
Commissioner Said?
Yes.
Commissioner Yang?
Taggaf? Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Underwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Abstain.
Commissioner Thomas?
Abstain.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Holst?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantener?
Yes.
16 with two abstentions.
Okay, well, that conditional use permit for a 15-foot building height at 915 Albion is approved. Commissioner Baker?
Thanks, Chair. This is our last item, and I just want to say thank you to the zoning committee members. I have really enjoyed working with them. I just want to say to my fellow colleagues on the Planning Commission that those planning commission that, um, those that are on the zoning committee are really wrestling and going back and forth with a lot of discussion on each and every one of these cases, and so I just appreciate, um, their their commitment to digging into the information, reading, um, staff, um, packets and all of, uh, the information that comes along with it. And because of that, um, the Grand Cleveland Parking Lot at twenty-sixty Summit Avenue, which was a site plan review for a parking lot condition amendment, um, was voted by our zoning committee to be laid over. Um, this application, uh, will be moved to our next zoning committee meeting, and, um, the main reason being is, uh, zoning committee members wanted more information and history about the site uh, before they made an important vote. So we are planning to lay that, um, application over to our next zoning committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Baker, and I believe you said that's the last one, correct?
That is correct.
All right. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, well, uh, before we move on, is there any question on the Grand Cleveland Parking Lot and the decision to lay it over? All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda is the Comm Plan and Neighborhood Planning Committee. Commissioner Grill?
All right, um, we have two items today. Um, the Homeless Services zoning study, which is to initiate the study and release proposed code amendments for public review and set a public hearing for April thirtieth. Um, the staff member on this is, um, Bill Dermody. Um, Bill, do you have a presentation on the homeless zoning study?
Uh, just a brief one.
Okay, uh, so, so we'll go to Bill.
Hello, everybody. Um, my name's Bill Dermody, uh, planner. For those who I haven't met yet, because it seems like we have a lot of new folks, hello and, and welcome to the commission. Normally, I would try to catch you before a meeting and, and, uh, say hello and introduce myself, but, you know, COVID makes everything a little more awkward and, uh, difficult. Um, today, we've got the homeless services zoning study on your agenda, and this was, um, the, the need for this zoning study came up real- rather quickly in response to a specific situation, but this would have broader implications. It's a citywide um, study. There is a temporary situation at a former fire station, um, on West Seventh that through a, an action by the city council affirming a mayor's, um, emergency ordinance that there is a daytime services for, for homeless people, um, occurring in that, in that fire facility. But there is no actual, uh, authorization in the zoning code for this, and since the, uh, COVID emergency will end at some point in time, um, but this particular use has a desire to continue on longer. That's the, the impetus for this study. This would allow daytime services to, to homeless folks, um, without having it be accessory to an overnight shelter, which is how it usually occurs in the city and, and elsewhere. Or emergency housing, which are, are, are two definitions for slightly different uses in our code that basically provide shelter to homeless people. The, you know, the, the full set of recommendations is, is in the code, but the, the base of it is to allow these daytime services to homeless folks with, uh, just slight, uh, conditions on them that, uh, that they'd be located within a half mile of an overnight shelter or, uh, emergency housing of a similar scale so that, you know, they're, so that these services are walkable, um, so that we are not creating some sort of transportation problem with the locating of these types of facilities. Uh, but clearly, they are necessary, and clearly, they are supported by the city's comprehensive plan, um, and all the efforts that the city is making to improve the situation for, for the unsheltered and, um, not permanently sheltered homeless folks in the city. So, um, I'd be glad to take any questions that you have. The request here is that you release the study for public review and, and set a, a public hearing for April thirtieth.
Thank you, Mr. Dermody. So I would need a motion, uh, to initiate the study and release the proposed code amendments for public review instead of public hearing for April thirtieth. Commissioner Grill, would you be okay making that motion?
Yep.
Uh, is there a second? Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, it's fine.
Is there a second on the motion?
Commissioner DeJoy, second.
Motion made by Commissioner Grill, seconded by Commissioner DeJoy to, uh, initiate the study on the homeless services, uh, zoning. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Sonia, can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Rizberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Perryman?
Yes.
Commissioner Grill?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley? Commissioner Riley? Commissioner?
Yes.
Commissioner DeJoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Hong?
Yes.
Commissioner Said?
Yes.
Commissioner Underwood?
Abstain.
Commissioner McMurtry?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tagheer?
Yes.
Commissioner Holt?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantener?
Abstain.
Commissioner Thomas?
Abstain.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
And the Chair?
Yes.
Sixteen with three abstentions.
So the motion to initiate the study and set a public hearing date for April thirtieth for the homeless services, uh, zoning study is approved. Commissioner Grill?
All right, our second item, uh, is the parking study. So this is to release the study, and it's proposed tax amendments for public comment and set the public hearing also for April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, and I believe Tony Johnson is here with a presentation.
Um, good morning, everyone. All right, so today I am here to talk to you about the parking study and the proposed amendments, and I will try to get through this relatively quickly so that Peter has plenty of time for the next informational presentation. So with the study, um, right now, we are proposing two options for, uh, the public and the planning commission to consider. Um, one option would eliminate minimum parking requirements from, uh, the code completely, um, and that's in Article Two amendments. And then one option would reduce minimum parking requirements through targeted exemptions and reductions. Both options decouple bike parking requirements from vehicular parking requirements. Both options propose amendments to the travel demand management ordinance and introduce a new supplemental TDM guide. Both options require parking to be unbundled, um, from rent or leases for residential properties. Uh, both options propose to streamline processes and standards for parking, and those amendments are found in Article Three primarily. Um, and then there's another, uh, number of other, uh, amendments in other chapters, um, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-five, and sixty-six, uh, which are intended to complement, uh, these kind of bigger ideas in the study. So there's two major goals of the study. The first one is to help implement the Climate Action Plan. Um, the other goal is to help implement, uh, comprehensive plan policies. So the Climate Action Plan calls for carbon neutrality in St. Paul by twenty fifty. Um, and currently, thirty-one percent of St. Paul's emissions can be attributed to vehicle trap- travel, um, which is primarily from, uh, single occupancy vehicle trips. Uh, the other goal is to help implement policies of Comm Plan, um, such as policy LU thirteen, which calls for reducing parking overall, and policy LU fourteen, which calls for reducing the amount of land devoted to off-street parking. Um, there's also other goals that, that can be furthered with this study, such as policy, uh, H eighteen, which calls for fostering the preservation and production of deeply affordable rental housing. So the first kind of major topic area that I want to talk to you all about is, uh, about climate change and carbon emissions and how, uh, our parking policies, policies contribute to that. So one of the things that this study, uh, tries to convey and get people to recognize is that the urban form and density of a city is inextricably linked to a city's carbon output per capita because of how the urban form of a city dictates travel behavior. Um, so, for example, in denser cities, um, with a greater mix of uses, people are more likely to take transit or walk or bike for their trips. Um, in a lower-density city that's auto-oriented, such as St. Paul, people are more likely to drive, um, to meet their daily needs uh, and their, uh, daily commutes. Um, so with these next couple of slides, I, I just want to give you guys a sense of how much we have prioritized um, the automobile in our planning decisions and public policy decisions and how that's expressed itself in our urban form of our city. So in St. Paul, we, we have roughly six hundred thirty-one point two acres of garage space. We have roughly, uh, two thousand six hundred and fifty-nine acres of surface parking. And we have roughly eight thousand five hundred and sixty acres of right-of-way. Altogether, about thirty-five point six percent of St. Paul's land area is dedicated primarily to the purpose of moving and storing automobiles. Um, so if we plan for driving, like we've done, um, people are going to drive, and if we create an urban form like this, it makes driving conducive and necessary for many trips. Um, and this is a, a kind of self, um, enforcing policy, um, you know, which, which reinforces itself. Um, and the reason why is that parking requirements reduce that, that's the, uh, which increases the distance between land uses, uh, which makes walking, biking, and taking publical, public transportation, um, less viable modes of getting around. Um, and what's ironic about this is that off-street parking facilities, um, ironically contribute to off-street parking demand. So by imposing parking requirements, we are contributing to off-street parking demand by, uh, uh, reducing density and increasing the distance between land uses. So they're contributing to the problem that they're supposed to solve. Um, and in this slide, this illustrates, um, you know, how our parking requirements would look, uh, if you, you know, built out these uses under, uh, with our current parking requirement. So a bar, for example, which is one of our, uh, highest parking requirements would result in a build-out where sixty-three percent of the development's area would be used for parking, um, and thirty-seven percent would be used for the building that the parking serves. And the sixty-three percent number would actually be a little bit higher if you factored in, um, setbacks and landscaping requirements. Um, a far more, uh, common parking requirement in our zoning code, uh, one space per four hundred for commercial uses uh, would result in a site build-out where thirty-nine percent of the development's area would be used for parking, and sixty-one percent of the development's area would be used for a building. Um, so when you apply these broadly, um, uh, parking minimums, uh, will oftentimes lead to an oversupply of parking. Um, and with these next couple of slides, this is, uh, uh, from when we were doing the Green Line, um, development, and, and one of the things that we did as, as part of that planning process was go out and get parking counts of existing developments along the Green Line. So this Menards, for example, um, the peaked observed parking usage was fifty-nine percent of the total supply at this Menards. At this, uh, Western Bank, uh, the peak usage was also fifty-nine percent. At the CVS, the peak usage was thirty-three percent. And at this Auto Zone, the peak usage was forty-four percent, uh, full. So there, there's two, um, kind of main reasons why a parking requirement will often lead to an oversupply. The first reason, um, and that people need to think about is that when parking minimums were originally developed, an oversupply was, of parking was preferable to a undersupply. Um, so parking requirements were designed to be inherently conservative in order to accommodate potentially infrequent peak, peak demands of free par- free off-street parking. Uh, the second reason is that parking requirements are blunt instruments, which are often determined by one factor that may influence off-street parking demand, such as the square footage, square footage of a commercial use or the number of residential uses in a development. In actuality, there's numerous factors which may influence, um, parking demand for any given development. Um, and these two targets are a great example, uh, of showing, um, you know, how parking requirements would change, uh, or how parking demand would be influenced by, uh, the surrounding density and the mix of land uses. Um, so this top target is one that I used to shop at a lot that's in Dinkytown, right? And so in Dinkytown, we have, um, a lot of supporting density and a greater mix of land uses, and so this target in Dinkytown, um, can be a viable business and operate with lower parking ratios because people are able to get to it in different, uh, ways other than driving. The second target that I'm showing, which, which, uh, is in the midway and definitely has oversupplies to parking, um, but would need more parking than the Stinky Town, um, example, um, because the surrounding density and mix of, uh, uses i- is lower, um, in this area than in this top example. Um, so another, uh, major policy consideration, um, is around housing. So parking increases the cost of housing primarily in two ways. So the first way that it increases, uh, housing costs is by limiting density and, uh, the production of new units. Um, so in St. Paul, well, in the Twin Cities, um, we've had a rental vacancy rate around three point five percent for many years. Um, and one of the things that we need to do to lower the cost of housing is simply produce more housing. Um, and so if we lower or eliminate parking requirements, um, that will enable increases of density, uh, which will create more choice in St. Paul's housing market. The other, uh, way that parking, um, and parking requirements increase the cost of housing um, is because of the practice of bundling parking with the, with housing costs. Um, and so what you do when you bundle, uh, parking, um, is you basically, you hide the cost of parking um, in the cost of something else. So i- in, uh, the example of housing, um, bundling parking would uh, hide the cost of parking, um, in the cost of your rent. And this is a very, uh, can be a, a very significant cost, uh, depending on, um, you know, what type of parking you built and, um, where, where the development would be located. Um, so take this with a grain of salt, because this isn't, um, St. Paul numbers, but this was from an APA article. Um, and in this, uh, their study, they estimated that parking, um, increases the cost of rent by a hundred and forty-two dollars. Um, and estimated that this is seventeen percent of additional costs can be attributed to parking. Um, and, and one of the, the issues with just the simplicity, um, of parking requirements, and one factor that parking requirements don't account for is income levels of the residents. Um, so in this chart, I'm giving you guys a breakdown of the, the number of households that don't have a car. And if you look at our, our lowest income levels, um, so thirty percent AMI and less, on average, thirty-four point three percent of those families would not have a car, yet we would require parking at the same rate as a market-rate development. Um, because these costs are bundled, um, parking minimums are akin to a regressive tax for lower-income residents um, because we're requiring them to pay for parking as a part of their housing costs, even if they don't use or need, um, you know, that parking space, they're, they're still paying for it, and it increases their cost of housing. In subsidized developments, this is also a problem, um, but the problem is a little bit different, right? So with, with So with subsidized development, what we're doing is we're injecting subsidy into a development to make the housing affordable for the residents that we're targeting. But what will happen if we don't take into account income levels when we're, you know, mandating parking for these developments is that there's a high likelihood that parking would be oversupplied, particularly, you know, at that thirty percent level. And we would be using our very scarce and limited housing resources to build unused parking instead of housing. And one of the things that I think we need to do and kind of center this on is look at examples of thirty percent AMI units or supportive housing developments, you know, that we've actually done in St. Paul, which is pretty rare because of the amount of subsidy that we have to do. And there's two factors that, you know, I want you to consider with these four examples that I gave in my staff report. The first factor or, you know, key takeaway from the developments is the low ratios of parking to residential units and commercial square feet. And also that the first floor of these developments is primarily active uses and not structured parking. So typically with most market-rate developments, what you'll see now is on the first floor, a small lobby, and then the vast majority of that would be parking, which isn't feasible, you know, if we're trying to get to these, you know, targeted income levels because of the cost of parking. So another kind of major policy issue to consider is economic development implications. So in the twenty forty Com Plan, our growth strategy is based off of this kind of nodal concept, where one of the goals is to create a city where people can meet most of their daily needs within walking distance at these neighborhood nodes. So if we keep our parking requirements as they are, this, our overall, you know, goal in this nodal strategy may be impeded for two big reasons. So the first reason is that minimum parking requirements detract from the walkability of commercial nodes and corridors. So this example that I'm showing in the top corner, it's kind of traditional urban form and, you know, a very walkable corridor, what should be extremely hard to reproduce today with our current parking requirements because of the amount of space that parking takes up. Another thing to consider with neighborhood nodes is that if we're successful in this policy, it'll help lower parking demand because it will enable more short-term discretionary trips to be conducted without a car because you'll be able to meet your daily needs within a twenty-minute walk. There's a couple of other factors that I talk about in the memo that parking requirements don't account for. One of them is what we're doing right now, telecommuting. So one of the lasting legacies of the coronavirus might be that we may continue to have a greater portion of our workforce telecommute at least part of the week. And that will drastically change, and already has drastically changed, our assumptions about parking and parking demand. And we need to try to account for that in this study. So another kind of major policy factor that I want to quickly touch on is market value and tax revenue implications of parking requirements. So Policy LU six, number three of the twenty forty Comprehensive Plan, calls for fostering equitable and sustainable economic growth by growing St. Paul's tax base in order to maintain and expand city services, amenities, and infrastructure. And these two examples kind of show the implications of auto-oriented development versus transit-oriented development in regards to tax revenue. So these developments, the Vintage on Selby and this associated bank building, were built around the same time, within a block of each other, on Snelling Avenue. And the Vintage on Selby is yielding us a tax revenue output of twelve dollars and seventy-two cents per square foot and is characteristic of transit-oriented development. This bank, which is very characteristic of auto-oriented development with a drive-thru, is yielding us a tax revenue of one dollar and eighty-one cents per square foot. So this will more efficiently help us meet Policy LU six, three of the twenty forty Com Plan. So one of the big things, you know, with both options and very important particularly for meeting our climate change goals, is travel demand management. So travel demand management is something that's often defined and thought about differently by different audiences. So a developer might talk about TDM as kind of infrastructure things that they do within their development. Many of you may interact with TDM at your workplace through their commuter benefits program. However, at its core, TDM is focused on moving people and includes policies and programs that facilitate the reduction and redistribution of travel demand and increase efficiencies in the transportation network, ultimately facilitating a mode shift and reducing the number of drive-alone trips. So this is, I love this picture that's in the corner. That's a great example of traffic reduction implications of TDM. And so what this picture is showing is just how much space is required to move people in different ways. So on the right, this is how much space and traffic would result from all of these people driving in a single occupancy vehicle. In the middle, it's showing the same amount of people being moved by bikes. And on the left, it's showing the same amount of people being moved within a bus. Sorry. So one of the big reasons, you know, why it's important for us to do this and get TDM right is that if we reduce or eliminate, you know, minimum parking requirements, that in itself will shift, you know, travel patterns over time. But that shift is going to be gradual. And one of our goals, our policies in the Comprehensive Plan, Policy T twenty-one, calls for reducing vehicle miles traveled by forty percent by twenty forty. So we don't have a lot of time to achieve that policy goal. And one of the things that can help us achieve that is an effective TDM ordinance because the whole point of TDM is to try to get people to shift modes away from driving in single occupancy vehicles. Right now, however, there is currently a number of issues with our current ordinance, our current approach. One of the big issues is that creating a viable TDMP, Travel Demand Management Plan, is complicated, it's expensive, and it requires the professional expertise of a traffic engineer or a city planner. In our ordinance, we say that anyone can do it, that the property owner could do it, but the requirements would make that impossible because we, as part of the TDM requirements currently, we require traffic and parking modeling, which unless a developer was also a city planner, they would be unlikely, it's unlikely that they would know how to do that. Another issue with our current ordinance and approach is that we don't have clear single occupancy vehicle trip reduction goals. So there's a wide variation of TDMPs being submitted and approved to the city because we don't have, we don't give a lot of guidance about what we should approve or what we shouldn't approve in regards to TDM. So with this study, under both options, we are proposing a new and unique and innovative approach to handling TDM, which will greatly simplify it and allow us to eventually apply TDM more broadly to developments. So what we did with this approach is essentially we did the work that a developer would pay a planner five or ten thousand dollars to do per plan. And we did a lot of that work upfront. And the way this works is we created a menu of options of, you know, commonly-done TDM strategies. And then each of these options have a point value associated with them. These point values are weighted based on the estimated reduction in vehicle miles traveled and therefore carbon output. So for both options, you know, this part of it is exactly the same. But one of the big, or, you know, slight but very important differences between the two options is that in the reduced minimums option, each of these strategies would also have a parking reduction associated with them. And so what this does is it vastly increases the amount of voluntary reductions that exists in our zoning code. And this is something, an idea that I'm really proud of, it's unique. No one's ever done anything like this before in the country. But so right now, we currently, there's three ways to reduce minimum parking requirements in our zoning code. You can do shared parking, shared vehicle parking, and providing bike parking. But by allowing a parking reduction for TDM measures, what we're doing is we're increasing the number of voluntary reductions in the code from three to twenty-eight. And so under the reduced minimums option, it is possible that almost any development anywhere in the city can conceivably reduce their parking requirement to zero by taking advantage of these reductions. And so essentially what this approach does is it uses the parking requirement and specifically the cost of parking to incentivize more TDM measures in order for a developer to get that parking reduction. So under both options, again, you know, you could get to whatever ratio, or a developer could get to whatever ratio they want. And the full elimination option, we would give them that development rights upfront. And in the reduced minimums option, you can reduce it through TDM if they had a minimum parking requirement. So the second part of the reduced minimums option is to introduce key exemptions in addition to those voluntary reductions that are being introduced through TDM. So one of those is eliminating minimums for developments that are proximate to transit, which I'll talk a little bit more about in the next slides. Another thing that we did in the reduced minimums option was exempt businesses under three thousand square feet. So essentially, the parking requirement would start at three thousand square feet. We are estimating that this will reduce parking requirements for existing businesses by fifty-six percent. And twenty-one percent of businesses in St. Paul would no longer have a parking requirement because of this reduction. Another thing that this study, or this option is proposing is to exempt units that are rented or leased at or below sixty percent AMI. So that helps solve the issue of affordable housing anywhere in the city. Another thing that the study proposes is exempting structures that were built before nineteen fifty-five, which is about seventy percent of our building stock, from a parking requirement that would result from a change of use. So an example of this would be, say, you wanted to go from, you know, something that was a residential unit and converted to a business. That type of change would likely kick in a higher parking requirement, which for a lot of historic buildings that weren't designed to accommodate parking, can create significant issues and can, you know, oftentimes prevent the development from happening or a new business from being established. So with this transit exemption, I want to talk a little bit more about this one in particular because it is one of the most effective reductions that is being proposed in the reduced minimums option. So currently, we eliminate minimums in St. Paul in two places. One of them is downtown. And then the other one is along the Green Line for parcels that are zoned, traditional neighborhood, our T districts. With the proposed amendments, I'm proposing a number of key amendments to this approach and to this section of the code. So one of the changes that I'm proposing is to not, you know, limit it to just T districts, right? So applying the reduction to anything that's within a quarter mile of one of the modes of transit in the ordinance. And this is important because, you know, transit-oriented development can happen in other zoning districts than, you know, just T districts. And so this will enable that to happen. Another big change is that this amendment ties the exemption to modes of transit instead of a street. So currently, the way that we eliminate minimums along the Green Line is by calling out University Avenue. In this proposed language, we would tie it to LRT, bus, or, sorry, light rail transit, Bus Rapid Transit, and streetcar lines. And this is a really important piece of this because what it will do is it will eliminate minimums over time as we build out our transit network. Another big, important piece of this language that's being proposed is that we are proposing to also tie this exemption or apply this exemption to projects that have been approved to enter the project development phase by the Federal Transit Administration or that have a full funding commitment. So this is showing what the initial exemption would be from transit and its relative effectiveness. So one of the things that we have to consider when, you know, weighing these two options is that the majority of our city is zoned for a single family and that the majority of our growth because of zoning is going to occur near transit corridors and specifically high transit corridors over time under the current zoning. So right away, if we did just this transit exemption, almost a hundred percent of parcels where we have our highest development capacity would have no minimum parking requirement. In these kind of mid-buckets, where we're going to see a lot of our growth kind of in neighborhoods and outside of downtown, about thirty percent of those parcels would be exempt right away from minimum parking requirements. And one of the things that I want to highlight and that you'll see on this, is that the B-line is shown and the exemption would apply to the B-line right away because it has a full funding commitment. So that's the Bus Rapid Transit line that's going to go along Marshall and then along Selby Avenue. And as I previously stated, the way this works and by tying it to transit, this would increase the amount of parcels that have no minimum parking requirements over time as we build out our transit network. So what this slide is showing is the currently approved Met Council High Frequency Transit Network for St. Paul. And if we fully built out our network under this scenario, these numbers in these two middle buckets would increase about twenty-five percent or about twenty percent for parcels not having a minimum parking requirement. And if we built out this network, which is what our planning team is advocating for and trying to push for, the network next, or transit network, this option or this transit build-out would eliminate minimums for the majority of parcels where we currently have the capacity for our city to grow. And so that's all I have today. And so right here, I have a parking study email set up. And then again, today, what the action that we're requesting is that you release this study for public review and schedule a public hearing for April thirtieth. And so with that, I'd be happy to take any questions that people have.
Thank you, Tony. Are there any questions for Tony on his presentation? Commissioner Cantor? Cantor?
Yeah, and excuse me, if this is not the right time to ask this sort of question. But first of all, Tony, great, great job. This is an amazing study. I just wanted to ask quickly about the parking maximums. I think that was near the end of the study. And just wondering, it looked like you were proposing just adopting kind of the parking maximums that were already in place. And I wondered if there was any consideration of maybe lowering those maximums or kind of what that went into that.
Yeah, so we've actually, we've had a lot of discussions about that at the committee level. The reason why I didn't do that is I wasn't directed to in my initial scope. And my scope got expanded as I was going along with this study. And so doing something like that is something that I wouldn't want to rush because of the market implications and the because of the market implications and the process implications of us doing that and getting it wrong. So in our code right now, we, you know, we have our maximums and then there's a way to go over the maximums with a conditional use permit. And one of the things that I'm nervous about is if we get too aggressive with it and we don't take time to consider it and look at different scenarios with it, we might accidentally, you know, make ourselves have to do conditional use permits every week for parking instead of focusing on, you know, some of the other studies that have been initiated recently. So what I would recommend is that if we want to look at maximums, I would recommend initiating a separate study just to deal with that issue. Oh, and one thing, one thing I should say too, that I forgot to mention is one of the things that we did through TDM is we created an incentive to lower your parking ratios. So, you know, with the TDM program, I explained that we set a point target for kind of each development. There's points associated with each strategy. And one of the things with the point target is if you build more parking, it's going to increase your point target and therefore more TDM stuff. And then if you reduce your parking ratios, the TDM program will lower the point target for your development. So that creates kind of an incentive to build lower parking ratios.
So Commissioner Grill, would there be anything you'd like to add about the discussions that were had at the committee level regarding that question?
I mean, I think Tony covered it pretty succinctly. And Chair, feel free to comment if you have additional items. But we did discuss maximums a few times. We've been meeting on this weekly for several weeks now. And there was a lot of conversation around maximums and could they be included in scope? And I think we voted it out of committee and to come to the full planning commission sort of with the expectation that there might be public comment or other items that come into play. But that it wasn't, it wasn't included as part of scope. And Chair, feel free to add any other additional items to that.
To the question about the maximums and coming out of committee, I think it was, the reason I voted to just send it out for public input was to see kind of the interest around all the issues that we discussed at committee level. There was a lot of discussion around the bundling, at least that I brought up, a lot of discussion about the parking maximums and then just other issues. And I think the general feeling was put it out there, see what comes back at public hearing and what other commissioners think about these issues. And then we'll come back to committee with this broader, I guess, input from all commissioners and community members and continue the discussions that we had at committee. I see that Commissioner Hood had a question, but Ms. Mohan, is there something that you'd like to add about this particular issue before I call on Commissioner Hood?
Sure, I just wanted to add a little bit also to the parking maximum conversation. Beyond just like having it be a different study, I don't want to forget our colleagues at Public Works. So I think, you know, there will be some concern also with this study on what happens to parking that is not related to development projects and sort of how do we manage the curb and what are the best ways to manage the curb? And zoning code is like one place where we can do that at the city, but there are other tools that may make sense where we would want to partner with different departments. So, and that could be a part of a different study that also looks at parking maximums. So it's not always just the zoning code that's a tool to manage parking.
Thank you, Ms. Mohan, Commissioner Hood, and then Commissioner Mitchell.
Thank you, Chair. I have a, Tony, I have a question on our current policy at the city level. How do we currently determine whether or not a traffic study or TDMP, Travel Demand Management Plan, is required for a particular development? Is, are there any size restrictions or is it based on staff discretion? And I know that you had mentioned various requirements moving forward that are proposed that would say yes, at this particular level or this particular building size, we would require them. But do we have anything like that currently? Thank you.
Yeah, so it's kind of both. So with the, with the TDM and the traffic modeling and parking modeling that's associated with that, it's kicked in at 100 parking spaces, I believe, off the top of my head, and then I think 50 spaces on the green line. And so it's kicked in as part of TDM at that threshold. As part of the ordinance amendments in TDM, I'm proposing to stop basing the threshold off of parking and instead basing it off the size of development. So under the proposed ordinance language, the new threshold for TDM would be 25 units or 20,000 square feet of a non-residential unit. And then why I say it's both is there's another section of the code in Site Plan Review where the traffic engineer could request a traffic and parking study. And there isn't a threshold for that. They could request it for any development that they think it's necessary to have it for.
Thank you. And one other follow-up question. Has there been any discussion in committee or amongst staff about basing it on the specific type of land use? For example, let's just take a Starbucks drive-through, for example, whereas that may be a small building for a traffic study, but it's a land use that has seemed to be proven has caused a little bit of backups, I think, to say it politely. Versus, for example, you may have a larger residential unit that might be within a downtown area that would likely not generate any traffic. So that would, that would just be an example. So is there any, is there any discussion on specific land use or building typologies that would, let's just say, trigger a TDMP or a traffic study where others would not?
Yeah, well, so no and yes. So in regards to your, your kind of first, you know, question about Starbucks and the traffic study. So that, that's something that the site plan, you know, review ordinance could cover. So the traffic engineer could, and I think probably did, request a traffic and parking study for that development. In regards to TDM, which is now being totally split out from that process and doing traffic studies and traffic modeling, there is considerations to geographies and then also to general land uses, which are grouped together based off of their travel characteristics. So for example, in downtown, we would require more points for your TDM plans because TDM will be more effective in downtown. And then outside of, and then on transit corridors, we require less than downtown, but more than everywhere else. And then everywhere else where there isn't kind of good access to high capacity transit, they get a lower point threshold to start with. And then that point target, again, can be adjusted based off of their parking ratio. So if you build a lot of parking, the way we're trying to disincentivize that is by requiring more TDM. If you build less parking, you'd have less TDM stuff to do. If that makes sense. And I can pull up the guide if you want me to kind of show that and how that works as well.
That's okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Hi, thank you, Chair. A couple of questions or comments. This is very technical. And when this goes out to pub for public hearing, how would the, just a regular layman be able to understand the implications of such, you know, some changes? So that's one of my questions. How will you bring this down a bit so other people in the community can understand this? And two, are we considering workforce development? Because when you think about low-income families and transportation, they need cars to go outside of St. Paul, Minneapolis. That has been the case. Because we don't have a great transportation system for buses, has that been considered in some discussions with workforce development? And how this is going to impact low-income families?
Yeah. So for your, the first part of your question, we are working on kind of a more general and simpler presentation for some webinars that we will be giving in the next couple of weeks. And one of the things that, that we're doing with that presentation is kind of breaking the big ideas into kind of characters. So we have like a character that's a renter, a homeowner, a business owner, and then trying to kind of explain in simple terms what these changes mean to you. In regards to your, your second question, that wasn't something that I would say it was considered kind of as a separate thing with this study at all.
So is it something to be considered? Because again, when we're thinking about changing how people go to work and low-income individuals may not have a choice but to get a car. So I'm just wondering, has that been considered and can we consider it in your presentation so that we have a better idea about how this impacts low-income families and workforce development?
Yeah, I mean, I couldn't, yeah, try to think about ways to address that. I mean, I mean, one thing I'll say kind of generally and something that we need to do and something that our comp plan calls for is with the neighborhood nodes, you know, strategy, for example. You know, one of the things that we're trying to do is make, make sure that you, people can reach their daily needs within 20-minute walking distance. And so if we're increasing, you know, residential and commercial density in the core cities, that's going to increase, you know, the number of jobs that are available within the city and on transit corridors where, you know, we have our highest density growth and where growth is going to occur in St. Paul is near transit corridor. Some people will be able to get, get to work on transit. So I'll have to try to think if there's a way I can kind of make that point and plug that in.
Just one more comment is just that the research shows that that's not the case. So I'm just want, I mean, that is truly not the case for low-income people to get the jobs within their their communities. That is not the research that has been found to be happening. So I just want you to know that. And that's my last comment.
Yep, yep. And I, I understand that. That is probably not true for right now, but that's one of the goals of the comp plan and one of the things that we're trying to do over time, right? So you know, we're trying to increase job density within the city. We're trying to increase housing density within the city. And so I'm hoping that that will result in more jobs being available for people within their communities that's closer to their houses. So hopefully, we don't get, you know, Amazon and Chocopee again if we create opportunities for, you know, different businesses to come in. And one of the ways to do that is to lower, reduce minimum parking requirements because that's, you know, one of the things that I think you'll, you'll see, well, I suppose if we do this, you wouldn't see it. But one of the things that, that a lot of people don't realize, I think, with development and density is that parking requirements are one of the biggest limiting factors to any development like that. Oftentimes, like the density that we set, the maximum density that we set matters. But a lot of times, what's actually going to set the maximum density is the parking requirement and trying to accommodate that parking because of the amount of space it takes up.
Thank you for that comment. I see Commissioner Holt has a question, but before calling on him, Tony, I'd ask that you consider Commissioner Mitchell's question, which I think was really well-stated around the issue of unbundling because the impression that I got at the end of our committee meeting, and I voiced this, was that that unbundling is gonna have a disproportionate impact on lower communities, lower income communities, which tend to be communities of colors, we all know. So I would just ask that, that question when it comes back to committee. You can have more information with regards to the unbundling and the, the way that Commissioner Mitchell posed it.
I mean, would sending kind of reports, academic reports be enough to show how it increases housing costs?
Well, I think the question that Commissioner Mitchell posed is how lower, I understand that it might lower costs, and I think your presentation was really clear on that. Well, not lower costs, that parking is a large, is a huge, is a large component of the cost of a housing unit. Whether or not that is passed down to a consumer or a tenant by unbundling, the cost savings is a question, one, that exists. But then, two, the question that Commissioner Mitchell posed, and I think it's a larger, it's another question is individuals who don't live in these transit corridors that need a car and that therefore if you unbundle and are therefore disincentivizing by having a car are kind of at a lose-lose situation. So I'd just ask that you consider the question that she posed around that issue of unbundling and maybe provide more information on that.
Sure, I'll do my best to do some updates.
Commissioner Holt and then Commissioner Grill.
Hello, Chair. Thank you. Tony, I guess I was wondering if you had any projections on the reduced parking minimums versus the eliminating parking minimums? I mean, clearly, both will, would, we would think reduce parking surface area, but I couldn't find it in here. And if it is, maybe just direct me to the right part of the study that maybe make some projections about what it might look like in 2040 and how likely it would be to meet goals under one model versus the other.
Sure. So if I can pull up the memo real quick, I'll show you where I kind of tried to compare the two options or give highlights about what they might mean and, you know, where one might be more effective for certain things than other things. And so at the end of the intro, on page kind of 22 to 25, I give kind of an overview of, you know, the big ideas in both studies. And then, you know, try to give just a very quick and succinct highlight of like what that might do. I don't have any specific kind of things of how this will affect development over time or putting a specific date on it. One of the things that I do, though, in this section right here is kind of, you know, talk about parking production and what, you know, has happened in the past and comparing parking ratios outside of areas where we've eliminated them. And then parking ratios, you know, everywhere else where we have a parking requirement. And one of the things that we've seen in the last two years is that, and this kind of goes to, I think, Commissioner Mitchell's question as well, is that on average, new development in downtown are near University Avenue. So places where we don't have parking requirements, reduce their parking by 30.5%, less than would have been required by code. But no one built anything without, you know, any parking or anything like that. We don't have that market yet, I think, for development to be financed without any parking. You know, maybe in downtown, that might happen, but everywhere else, it's highly unlikely, in my opinion, that a development would get financed without providing any parking. And there's also, I mean, there's market reasons why you wouldn't want to build something without any parking. Parking is still, you know, one of the main amenities that people look for when choosing housing. And so that's something that's likely going to be true and continue to be true until we build out our transit network and make it possible to get to more places, you know, via high-capacity transit.
Thank you.
Commissioner Grill?
I think I, my issues, I think, have been covered, I think, by everyone at this point. I think when we get to the public presentation point, clarifying the differences between the TDM plan, the full elimination option, and then how it is not maximums, I think would also be helpful. Just all of us going through several weeks of reviewing the plan, I think it was really clear how confusing even, even we found it. And that's no fault of Tony's. It's just a really complicated topic. So I think any of those places where we can simplify the, the, the big points. And I know, Tony, you've done a good job in the presentations, but it's easy to get bogged down in the report. So I think it was an excellent presentation and appreciate all the and appreciate all the work that you have done and and every time we have increased the scope for you. So so thank you for that. But yeah, that was my only one note.
Thanks for those comments. Any additional questions for Tony or staff? Seeing none, Commissioner Grill, I'd be looking for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that the Planning Commission release the zoning study and proposed amendments for public review and schedule a public hearing for April thirtieth, 2021.
Right, motion made by Commissioner Grill, is there a second?
Seconded, Commissioner Hood.
So mo- motion by Commissioner Grill, second by Commissioner Hood. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Is there any discussion? I have a question, because we have some questions. So we brought up some questions, so about how he's going to to release it. Is he going to release it? Some conditions about releasing this. Because we have to be able to, the community has to be able to understand it.
Sure, so.
So is that not part of the condition? We're going to release it as is?
It is, it would be as as it currently was sent out to all the commissioners with the understanding that Mr. Johnson is preparing additional presentations to give to the community in more layperson terms.
Okay, so should that be part of our motion or not? I just want to make sure. I just want to make sure I understand how it's going to go out to community.
Sure, so I think what you would be proposing then, is there any additional? Is there a particular thing that you would be asking as a condition that you could offer as a friendly amendment to Commissioner Grill?
My my amendment is that it would go out in different, I have to think about how I want to word this, um, in different terms so that community is under understands it better. I, because I can't support it the way it's written.
Okay, I see Director Pereda has a comment, and then I'll come back to you. Is that okay, Commissioner Mitchell? Because it might be clarifying your, what you're trying to articulate.
Yeah, thank you.
Director Pereda.
Chair and Commissioner Mitchell and others. We, so actually, Meneka Mohan and Tony Johnson have been working really hard on, I think we alluded to a couple of presentations for the community. We've also involved our our communications professional, who is who is not a planner. She she's challenged us to to not speak in in terms that, you know, only planners understand on this issue. So I just wanted to comment a few things, and then I wanted to recognize or ask it that if we could allow Meneka Mohan to to speak a little bit more about the plans, Chair. We have, we do have a website as well as a an email address for for questions for the community. And on the website, we have some some information about about the process. We hope to continue to populate that with frequently asked questions and things like that, as well as some additional communication materials to help get the word out to the community, both residents and businesses. So if I might, if you'd be comfortable recognizing Meneka, and she could comment a little bit more about the plan for getting getting the message and and the information out in a in a format that works for folks.
Ms. Mohan.
Uh, thank you, Chair. So through the Chair, this is Meneka, Planning Staff. I've been working with Tony and then some consultants on two public webinar webinars that we will be hosting if you set the date for the public hearing on April fifteenth in the evening and then April twentieth during lunchtime to provide sort of a brief overview in general what the parking regulations are trying to do. Basically, is what Tony said, through different stories of a renter, a homeowner, a developer, and a city person that sort of explain the options in more layperson terms. And so that that is our strategy. We also are releasing it today for April thirtieth, which is generally more than the thirty days that we allow. And we also have a email address and a website. And if the study is released today, there'll be a form on the website that folks will be able to use to submit their public comments.
Thank you, Ms. Mohan, and I'll see Mr. Johnson, and then I'll I'll make a comment, and I'll come back to Ms. Commissioner Mitchell.
Yeah, so in the appendix in the report, one of the things that we did for the committee for the last meeting was created kind of an executive summary chart of the amendments. So if I can pull it up real quick. You know, it's a long study, and part of the reason why it's long is because there's two options. So I created this chart to kind of very simply say what each amendment would do and then for what option it would go with. So something to maybe check out to review the amendments if you don't want to read the full, the whole thing.
Thank you, Tony. So I I just want to say, Commissioner Mitchell, I appreciate you making this point because it does bring back the focus to the implications on the individuals that it will, that it will impact. And I and I do think that there is, I I do think that as as Commissioner, as Commissioner Grill stated, we kind of, when we were going through this, we get so bogged down in the intricacies of the document itself that we sort of assume this role that we almost are are speaking for everybody and and can sort of protect everybody when, in reality, community in and of itself should be able to advocate for itself. And so I appreciate your comment because it it does get a little problematic for me when we begin to assume that role that we know what's best for a community. And so I'll I'll come back to you and see where you're at, having heard Director Pereda, Ms. Mohan, and Mr. Johnson's clarifications.
Is there another? I thought I had saw some hands.
But I think I think it's back to you.
Okay, so this is my thoughts. Because of the district councils, I think that somehow, again, we have to understand that, you know, yes, we're in COVID nineteen. Yes, we we do technology, yes, we do. Many people in the community do not and do not access computers, and putting things on websites just don't work. And so if we really want to have community input and engagement, there's got to be a different way than just website. I'm just going to recommend that I'm okay with the April thirtieth, I'm okay with that. Yet I do like for them to engage with the district councils. So that would be one way to get community input is to engage with district councils.
Commissioner Riley.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I want to echo what Commissioner Mitchell just shared. I I think one of the benefits to releasing this to public hearing is it does allow the city staff to go out and communicate with folks in community. And I I really appreciate Commissioner Mitchell's suggestion. And I I would support that. I think it gives, you know, there's like six weeks between now and and April thirtieth, and it would be nice to talk to the district councils as well as the existing partnership with Move Minnesota, which has, you know, folks in community already built, sort of baked in to that and figure out some really great strategies to get to people where they are as, you know, sort of vaccination numbers increase. Outside is still relatively safe, the weather is getting much nicer, we can only hope. So, yeah, I really, I really like that idea. I don't know if we can add it to a motion, but it also might be nice to get an update in two or four weeks from staff, sort of how that's going, as sort of an accountability measure. And I'm really impressed with the study, by the way. This is incredible work. So thank you for that, and thanks for the time, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Riley. So I'm I'm hearing two different things, one from Commissioner Mitchell about outreach to district, well, to the just outreach into the community. And then I'm hearing from Commissioner Riley to come back in four weeks or sometime before the public hearing to kind of give us an update on it. But I'm not hearing a motion or asking for a motion or or a friendly amendment to Commissioner Grill. So i- is there a friendly amendment?
I thought I did. I have a friendly amendment that we reach out to, one, the district councils and the community in regard to this plan before April thirtieth.
All right, so Commissioner Grill, I'll come back to you. Would you be willing to accept that as a friendly amendment?
I would, I I would like to know if if staff's comfortable or that they have, if they're able to. I I just don't want to set something that they're, they're just not going to be able to do in the timeframe. But if I don't hear anything else from staff, then yes, I would accept the amendment. So if there's any comments from staff before I accept it. Director Prayer, or sorry, Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, Louis.
Yeah, I'm just chatting here with the team. We have been talking to Move Minnesota, so that's that's a great idea to continue to work with them as a partner. And maybe there's some creative other forms of engagement. We have been working with our plan to engage with district councils. I believe all of them are meeting online today. You know, whether there's some partnerships to do some outdoor type, you know, sessions or things like that, pop-ups. Maybe there's there's something we can add into that mix, but but I think we can explore it. But just want to set expectations that, you know, there's we, you know, other, the organizations in the community are are doing things online as well. And so we're just, we we, we're working with them and kind of, obviously, constraints are, you know, vaccines and and the weather. But certainly, we'll we'll do our best. And 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 I would invite Meneka or Tony to to add to that if you've got other things in your mind, assuming you're okay with that, Chair.
Uh, yes, Tony or Meneka?
Yeah, I don't have anything to add. Do our do our best, get it out there. Actually, I guess I have one thing. So we we I have done some engagement at district councils prior to getting to this point. So I went very early on, I went to some on the A-line before we were even considering full elimination, just to talk about kind of that transit exemption. I've been to Summit Hill a number of times because of their parking concerns along Grand Avenue. And then we recently had another informational presentation to sustain St. Paul. So we will continue to try to get the word out and get people to, you know, know what's going on and to help them provide u- useful comments for us to review and consider with this.
Anyone else from staff? All right, so I'll come back to Commissioner Grill, having heard that. Commissioner Grill, are you okay accepting that as a friendly amendment?
So Commissioner Mitchell, are you, if I say that staff will explore additional opportunities for community engagement and engagement with the district councils, is that, are you comfortable with that?
And and report back to us, because I'm on a district council, and we have not heard this. So I'm just, and I'm a district council, some of you. So I just want to make sure that that they give us a report back.
Okay, so Chair, I'd like to amend the, sorry, I'd like to amend the motion to include that staff explore additional community engagement opportunities and engagement with the district councils and report back to the full Planning Commission before the public hearing.
Okay. And I think Commissioner Riley does noted that that reporting back is important to him as well. So would there be a a specific date or weeks before? Commissioner Grill, would you just leave it up to staff?
I think because they have to deal with the scheduling and planning aspect, and and they have a month. I I think I would leave that to staff to give us the date, as long as it's before the public hearing.
So the the motion now is, I don't think, do do I need to take a second on that? Or is it because it's a friendly amendment? Commissioner Hood, are you okay with that as well?
I am okay with that.
All right, so the the motion then is, let me bring my agenda back up. The motion now then is to release the parking study with its proposed text amendment for public comment instead of public hearing for April thirtieth, 2021, with the additional condition that staff explore additional community engagement with district councils and community and report back before the April thirtieth date on the engagement that has occurred. Is there any discussion, additional discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Asanya, can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner DeJoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Grill?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner McMurtry?
Yes.
Commissioner Said?
Yes.
Commissioner Perryman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hong?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Epstein.
Commissioner Joe?
Yes.
Commissioner Katner?
Yes.
Commissioner Holt?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Taggia?
Yes.
And Chair?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson, and I'm voting yes.
What do you mean?
This is Commissioner Anderson, and I'm voting yes.
I don't know. I'm sorry, I, yeah, I missed you, I said, okay, I'm sorry. So that's seventeen and one abstention.
So the the motion carries to release the study with its with the additional condition or two conditions. The next item on the agenda is a presentation by Luis and our legal counsel, Peter Warner, will be also available for questions, I believe, regarding the Planning Commission authorities. So I'm just going to provide a brief background on how we got to this point and also to sort of set the expectations of of what we can do going forward. So throughout my time in the Planning Commission, and I think anybody who has been in the commission for as long as I have or longer, we have constantly been struggling with the issue of housing affordability within the city of St. Paul, the equity issues regarding, including all community members and making the city a livable place for everyone. And so we've throughout, we've had a lot of discussions over and over again, specifically when major developments, which by all accounts are beautiful developments, are being erected across the city that are market rate apartments and in a way price out a lot of members of the of our community of St. Paul. And there's been ongoing discussion about what, how, what and how the commission can do to sort of have either requirements or impose conditions on developers to sort of have this broader consideration for those lower economic individuals of our city and, you know, including everybody. And it it always turns into a discussion about what we can and can't do, the tools that we do and do not have available, the the methods by which we can achieve these goals. The tools that we do and do not have available, the the methods by which we can achieve these goals. And. That this this. Ongoing debate about this issue kind of culminated for the new commissioners. Not just the new five ones that came in, but also the the ones that were sworn in last month kind of culminated. With a with a discussion during a project that we voted on. A few months ago. And the subsequent presentation by Director Pareda on the projects that are in place for the upcoming year. And sort of the. The absence of what. Is known as the inclusionary zoning study. Which is this idea that. If I can summarize it correct, I may be summarizing incorrectly, but my understanding of it is. Is that there would be a regulation in the city. That would, or there would be an exploration about whether a regulation. Would be appropriate. In which developers would be required to incorporate affordable housing within. Within their projects. We had some discussions at the zoning committee a few years back and we explored. That question a little bit and we kind of got a, I believe, one of the commissioners sent out a email. With numerous cities around St. Paul that already have inclusionary zoning incorporated within their code. And then sort of COVID happened, you know, the resources of staff are limited. So we have other projects, other studies that are being done by the city that that seek to meet the goals as well. And so we have been having this discussion about what the authority of the commission is. And I believe that's what we're here to do today. Luis.
Yes, Chair. So I just wanted to kind of ask a question. We have a presentation prepared. Peter Warner has been the city attorney's office and I. But also wanted to respect your time and I know Peter has some limited time here, so. It is a bit of a lengthy presentation, a lot of legalese. We can try to run through it quickly. We can. Defer it to next time. We could send it in advance and then talk about it next time. We could, I just wanted to see what. Sort of the temperature is for jumping into it now, given that we've had quite a quite a meeting already.
Thank you for asking about that, Luis. So I will also add that. The steering committee meets before. The planning commission and we have been having ongoing discussions regarding this presentation. And what we can do and those discussions are still ongoing. So we can, we could definitely continue this presentation to the next planning commission. When hopefully we have a more concrete idea of. And have more options available for the commission at that time. I see Commissioner Grill has her hand raised, but I would also see if. People would be willing, we can take a vote on whether, because I do understand we've already been here for two hours. And we can take a vote on whether to hear this today or. Wait till the next planning commission meeting when we can. Have the presentation as well. So Commissioner Grill.
I was just going to ask if you needed a motion for that because I want to see and hear the whole presentation, but I'm going to have to leave soon. And I'm imagining there's a lot of people in that boat as well. So if you need a motion, I would make a motion that we delay this to the next planning commission meeting.
I see Commissioner Baker has his hand raised and and I'll come back to you, Commissioner Grill. Commissioner Baker.
Thanks, Chair. I would agree with Commissioner Grill and one of my requests is if we motion, there is a motion and it's approved to move this over to another meeting that we. It's possible that we can move this up at the beginning or towards the beginning of a meeting.
Yes, and just looking at the agenda, I would ask that this be put on the next planning commission meeting, which would be on April second. And and that we do address it. Earlier on the agenda as well. So would Commissioner Baker or Commissioner Grill be willing to make a motion and then we can take a vote and see where everybody else is in terms of time? And then I'll come to Commissioner McMurtry in a second here.
I will motion. This presentation.
So the motion is to delay the presentation to the next planning commission meeting, Commissioner Baker.
That is correct.
Okay, is there a second on the motion? Okay, great. Commissioner McMurtry. By Commissioner Baker, seconded by Commissioner Grill. Commissioner McMurtry.
Yeah, I I don't know if this is something needs to be added, but I know that it was offered that we could get it before as a as a pre read and I wanted to make sure we could could still. Have that opportunity before the, we see the presentation at the next meeting.
And I think Director Pareda can send it out. He did say that he could do that. Commissioner Rizberg.
Yes, I agree with the motion, but I didn't want to check in with Mr. Warner or to make sure he's available on April second.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Rizberg. Mr. Warner, would you be available on April second for the presentation?
Thank you, Chair. Commissioners, yes, I will be available that morning. I'm leaving that afternoon, but to go out of town, but. That morning, I'm. Happy to be here.
Any additional questions or discussion on the motion? Sonia, can we get a roll call?
Okay, Commissioner Rizberg.
Yes.
Commissioner Perryman.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Mr. Grill.
Yes.
Mr. Hood.
Yes.
Commissioner DeJoy.
Yes.
Mr. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Cantner.
Yes.
Commissioner McMurtry.
Yes.
Commissioner Said.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Taggia.
Yes.
Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Unanimous.
So the planning commission authorities' presentation will be laid over till the next planning commission and if we could, Luis, just. Maybe put it before the comp plan and neighborhood planning committee. Issue or agenda item. Moving on to the transportation committee, Commissioner Rizberg.
Yes, thank you. Just quickly, our next meeting is of the transportation committee is this coming Monday, March twenty second, from four thirty to six. We have two items on the agenda. The first is. A informational presentation on the Metro Beeline Bus Rapid Transit Project. And Adam Smith from Metro Transit will be talking to us. And the second is the Minnehaha Avenue and Stillwater Road Resurfacing Project. And Faye Semmer of Mindot will be talking to us as well, so. I encourage anybody who's interested in these projects to please join us. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Rizberg. Moving on to communications and nominations, Commissioner Underwood.
Chair, she left a message. She had to leave out, she had, she said she didn't have a report out.
Okay. So then moving on to the next item, task force and liaison reports. Commissioner DeJoy.
Yes. Thank you, Chair Ron Hill Morales. The Community Advisory Committee held an online community meeting on March sixteenth. When we reviewed the finalist scenarios presented by the Cunningham Group. We had a hundred and fifty people from the general public in attendance and about. Up to sixteen other folks from. The Port Authority and PED and on the committee. We're still seeking input about the master plan scenarios. And the draft housing policy. And to review those, I did post in the chat the link. To visit the Hillcrest Master Planning. There is a survey that we're encouraging folks to take. The survey is at that on that webpage. And we're hoping to get the surveys completed by April sixteenth. And you can also add comments in the ideas board. That's also accessible through that link. And one other thing I'd like to mention is that the Eastside Freedom Library held a public meeting as well. Twenty people were in attendance. It was entitled What's Going On at Hillcrest, Part One. And so there was great input as well, and I noticed that some of the same people that attended that meeting did attend. Our Community Advisory. Online meeting on the sixteenth, so. That's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner DeJoy. And I'll call on Commissioner Grill, any. Report on. Your task force.
So the stationary task force for River View has not met yet. I believe the names of the members of the committee will be formally. Shared in April, at which time meetings will start to be scheduled.
Thank you, Commissioner Grill. So I'll move on to old business and then new business and I know. We're really late, but if there's any new business or people would like to add to the agenda for the next planning commission meeting, you can say it now. Okay, so then we will adjourn the March nineteenth, twenty twenty one. St. Paul Plan Commission Meeting. Thanks, everybody, for joining and thanks, everybody, for your time and discussion and input today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to the new members.
Thank you.